Good evening. We're going to be starting the April 1st council meeting. If you can please rise, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if you can remain standing, the mayor is going to do the memorials for the month. Good evening, everyone. Our deceased residents for the month of March 2024. Lillian Clark, Margaret Boggs, former Brookhaven Councilwoman Erica Fuchs, Janet Ruth Brown Hyde. Thank you.
We'll have the roll call. Mr. Heller is absent. Mrs. Fovia, Ms. Fovia, I'm sorry.
Present.
Mrs. Heller?
Present.
Mr. DePlicky?
Present.
Ms. Solicki?
Present.
Mr. Pappas?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mayor Leslie?
Present.
Mr. Wills?
Here.
Mr. Catania?
Here.
Mr. Wilbert's here. Mrs. Boyle?
Present.
Chief Montella?
Here.
Chief Weiss?
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Ford is not here since there was no school today, so we're going to the next item on Zach Justin, the Eagle Scout project. If he wants to come forward, we do need to make a motion to authorize his project. So Zach, do you want to come up to the podium? That might be easier. Mrs. Heller, did you want to?
So Zach is going to be explaining one of his projects that he has for his Eagle Scout. He's with Troop 605, but I don't want to give away all of his information, so he can do his presentation. But this presentation, thank you, is actually part of the PICO grant that we received last year, which was in the amount of, it was a $10,000 match. So part of the funding for that grant is going to go towards Zach's project, and the other part is going towards the Hallie Christine Jackson Sanctuary, the Butterfly Sanctuary. So I'm going to let Zach go on and tell us about his project.
How close should I be?
Is that on?
Hold on, is it on?
It's on.
You're good?
This is good?
Okay, so I'm getting a good sign from Zach, so you're good.
All right. Good evening, Brookhaven Borough Council. Before I go into any detail, I hand you out some of the chores that will tell you all about how Eagle Scout projects should be. My name is Zachary Justin, and I am a life scout of Boy Scout Troop 605 located at St. John's Chrysostom. I myself am a Brookhaven resident, so when it came time for me to pick my Eagle Scout project, I knew I wanted to do something that would benefit my hometown. In order for this process to begin, I reached out to Brookhaven Borough Office, and it was given the names of Mr. and Mrs. Heller. Before, oh, my bad. I emailed the Heller's asking for ideas in Brookhaven for Eagle Scout project. Mrs. Heller provided me with a list of few ideas that the council currently had at the time. One of the projects that stood out to me was the one on the Arlington property, which happened to be at the end of my street. So we scheduled a meeting to go over what they wanted there, and I met with the Heller's as well as Public Works employee. The main goal ultimately desired is a walk-through path from the corner of Edwards and Arlington down to Brookhaven Road. Currently, Brookhaven owns the upper portion of that land, while the portion down near Brookhaven is still privately owned. The Heller's and I discussed what could be done on the upper portion of this land, and I plan to install two large benches, just like the ones out front of this building. And the benches will be anchored down onto two large concrete pads that will need to be installed. See, if you look here, there's padding there. Those are not the benches that I'll be using, but the pads themselves will be similar. The benches, yeah, these benches will be on both sides of the upper path, about 20 feet apart. If you look around here, right where you see the, right by this tree, will be one bench, and then over here by this house, there's not very, I can't really circle or anything, will be, just picture it, on the other side, there will be another bench there, on the opposite side. These will be the benches that I'll be installing, and along with these two benches, there will be a, two red maple trees that I plan to plant in the area, specifically asked by Mr. Heller. My hope is that this will be a nice resting place for my, for people to walk through the area on hot days or long walks. This project will require assistance from the Public Works team, along with the management of the project, with my management of the project and the assistance of other scouts in my troop. I do not have a set date yet on which we plan to start, as I still have to get the project signed off by the Minquess District Eagle Scout Project Coordinator. Once that is done, we hope to get it finished as soon as possible before it gets too hot this summer. I ask the Brookhaven Council to approve this project to allow me to do something that will benefit our hometown for years to come. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Heller, do we need a motion to authorize?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept Zach's proposal for his Eagle Scout project for the Arlington area.
Do we have a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. We are ready for the first public discussion. If you do come up, can you please print your name on the paper that Mrs. Boyle has, so she can read it for the minutes? Anybody who wants to, Mr. Leslie?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Charles Leslie, 703 Cambridge Road. I received this letter in the mail. I guess I'm part of some scam or something that's going on. Just want to bring it to the council's attention and the public's attention, that some company in North Carolina just picked me out, putting stuff in the trash, and they're going to fine me $100 a day if I don't get it cleaned up. I did bring it to the chief's attention the other day. He was aware of it, so I'm just bringing it to the public's attention if anybody else is in some trash scam. So I did call the number, nobody answered. In case our, I'll get this from Fayetteville, North Carolina. The second thing is that I have the traffic light out here at Edgemont and Coburn and Cambridge, seven minutes and 42 seconds the other day at 3:30 in the morning going to work. And somebody said there was a problem with the shadow, the sun and everything. Not at 3:30 in the morning, there wasn't. That needs to be addressed, I believe. And then coming the other way on Coburn, one car comes through, and it's back to red. We got to get that fixed. Seven minutes and 42 seconds at 3:30 in the morning the other day going to work.
Were you late, sir?
John's going.
Were you late?
This intersection right here.
Were you late, sir?
No, I'm not late.
Were you late?
I'm up two hours before I go to work. Anyway, somebody could be late to work. And anybody's traveled there, they know that it's a lot of pain in the neck over here. We got to get it fixed.
Charles, which intersection is it?
Edgemont and Coburn.
Edgemont and Coburn. Cambridge.
Cambridge.
Going out, and then coming the other way from Coburn, it's one car comes through. We all know that. We've been through it.
I know.
Just bringing that to the attention of the council. Thank you.
John will call tomorrow. Thank you. Anybody else for public discussion?
Hi, Lyndell Gott.
Do I need to tell you my address?
Yes.
4501 School Lane. I just have one question. And I'm really glad that someone's taping. Does this mean that the meetings will be posted?
Yes.
Yes, they're on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
I've had some trouble catching up with the meetings that I was not, you know, that I haven't been able to attend. But is there any reason why we can't livestream? Has that been discussed at all?
I believe that it has been looked at. I don't remember off the top of my head what the reasoning was for the livestream aspect. So this was one of the, I guess, options that was available at the time. But we can always revisit the live streaming, if necessary.
Yeah. You know, I mean, if it's a financial issue, I think that, I mean, I don't know how much it would cost to have that. I honestly don't. But if it's a financial issue, I think it's something that I know the residents that I speak with would be willing to, you know, have that put in the budget, because it's, you know, it's not always easy to get here. And if you're traveling, you could at least keep up with what's going on.
We have a technology and communications meeting on Thursday, so we will definitely bring it up and see what is possible for the livestream. Because I don't think you're the only person that's requested. And I do know that we researched it back during COVID, when I was doing Zoom, but I don't recall off the top of my head what was the reasoning that we could not physically livestream, but.
Well, I know back in the day, I used to, when I worked in Pendelco, we used to do some stuff. And being in the technology department, I would help do that. And it's not new technology.
No, no.
You know? All right, thanks.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome. Anybody else appear?
Good evening. My name's John Pacilio. I'm the resident at 4926 Grant Drive. I'm just following up with what Mr. Leslie said about the, on the other side of Coburn and Edgemont, the traffic light there. I drive up there every morning. Usually, if I'm not, if I come up short of the line or just at the line, I have to sit at least through two cycles before the light will change on my end. And it, like he said, it takes like maybe 10 minutes added to the commute, and there's maybe no traffic coming on either sides. But like, if there's no traffic on either sides, it's still not signaling, and it's frustrating. So if we could get someone to please look at that, appreciate it.
John's going to call tomorrow, and hopefully somebody will be coming out tomorrow or the next day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that's the end of the first public discussion. The next person is Police Chief Weiss. Would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just before I start, as far as the signal, we are aware that it does seem to be somewhat of an intermittent problem. I've been told there's something with the glare, there's something with vehicles not tripping the light. Hopefully Signal Service can get it fixed this time. I am aware it's a problem. We've tried to address it. We've tried doing everything we can. We called them. I think part of the issue is that it is somewhat intermittent, so hopefully they'll be able to, knowing that information, hopefully they can troubleshoot, try to get this fixed.
Just interrupt for real quickly. Does this interfere when there is like a fire event, where if there's the light automatically?
Yeah, often times works for a fire. They're fully.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just so you know, I am aware of that. So, all right, for the month of March, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned a total of 814 assignments through Delcom. Some of the noteworthy incidents were, we had nine thefts, we had two vehicle thefts, one in which there was an arrest made with that. One, there's circumstances, it is technically a vehicle theft, but I think that's going to be resolved where it's actually not going to be a theft. I think somebody is reporting something that may not be exactly correct. We also had one attempt theft of vehicle. We had two simple assault, one vandalism, two fraud. We had nine DUIs, two were controlled substances, and seven were alcohol-related. We had four public drunkenness, one disorderly conduct, six narcotics investigations, eight animal complaints, one curfew violation, one solicitor complaint, 26 suspicious conditions, two harassment complaints, 21 disturbances or domestic disputes, 55 medical assists, 31 assist other departments, 12 alarms, 20 vehicle crashes, and 30 hazardous conditions or assist motorists. For the month, we had 36 adults arrested, three juveniles, which were related to the vehicle theft. Citations issued, there were 201. Parking violations, there were 27, and warnings issued, there were 206. I'm going to bring, I just received an email this evening that I'm going to address, because I think it's an issue that obviously people are concerned with. I'll read you the email. It says, Dear Chief Weiss, I'm sending this email because I'm not sure if I will be able to make it to the council meeting tonight and question you directly due to my work schedule. So I have a question pertaining to an issue that came to my attention after your Brookhaven Council President was pulled over by your Brookhaven Police Officer. I understand you supposedly have a hit list on certain people. I am supposedly on it, which I have no idea why I would even be on it, although I have my own suspicions, but I will keep it to myself. So, one, do you have a hit list? And if so, I would like to know why I would even be on it. I heard of others, but I'm only asking for myself. Can you please explain, if you know anything about this hit list? I know I'm not a Brookhaven resident, and you don't have to answer my question, but how do you think that would look? People thinking you have a hit list out on them, and you do not want to reply to them, especially all the bad publicity you were just getting last month. And it's signed Kim Roman, Parkside resident. My response to that is very brief. As a result of this email, I want to make it emphatically clear that I do not have any hit lists. Our officers do not have any hit lists. And in the time I have been chief, there never were any hit lists. I have done an exhaustive search in our record management system, and there are no contacts with Ms. Roman for traffic stops. There are no contacts with her vehicle ever being stopped by Brookhaven Borough Police Department. I feel that this has all, all only come about as a result of a traffic stop involving Mr. Heller. There was never a mention of any of this before that. His public statements continue to do damage to our police department, and this is yet again another example. More lies and untrue statements being spread. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Montella, your report, sir?
Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Residents, yes? Brookhaven Fire Company's March 2024 Fire Report. We had two fire incidents in the borough, 19 non-fire, 34 calls for mutual aid, four drill sessions, total of 59 calls for the fire department for the month, 161 for the year. We had a $40,000 loss on contents in the borough. We had $800,000 of property endangered in the borough this month. For the year, we've had $1,300,000 of property endangered in the borough. No firefighter injuries for the month. Our manpower was 59 calls, average of 10 firefighters responding per call. We're in service for 320 hours, 729 hours for the year. Our fire training was four drills, averaged 24 firefighters, 156 hours of training for the month, 344 for the year. Incidents we responded to in Brookhaven Borough. One CO called 532 West Brookhaven Road to Stonehill, four departments in Building B. Contractor in the basement condo unit running a gas sol inside the building filled the building up with carbon monoxide. So the residents upstairs with the CO detectors in their condos actually probably saved some lives in the day. Three motor vehicle accidents in the borough with injuries, 5,075 Edgemont Avenue, 3,500 block of Edgemont Avenue, and we had another one at Edgemont Avenue and Cambridge Road. We had a unique call the other day, a wires transformer call where half the borough was knocked out of power during the day. The call was in front of 4505 Chandler Drive. Residents at 4505 Chandler Drive and 4500 Chandler Drive lost multiple appliances in their homes due to this PICO failure. One resident lost every appliance in his house, and the other resident lost his heater, his air conditioning, and some, all his cable TV was burned up. And as a result of that, residents were advised to have a claim opened with PICO's claim unit, and advised to notify their insurance companies. That was a little different. An odd call that caused a lot of damage. Assisted Chester Fire Department covering the city of Chester while they operated on a water rescue involving a small child that fell into the Chester Creek. While they were on their rescue mission to find this child, our fire company responded down there with an engine. We covered calls in the city of Chester while they were out looking for this small child all night. We assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building fire at 464 South Old Middletown Road. Assisted Aston Township on two building fires, one at 2157 Lee Lane, one at 8 Green Lane. Assisted Chester Township on two building fires, 20 McDonnell Boulevard and 1320 Powell Road. And we assisted Upland Fire Company on a building fire at 43rd Street. Our fire training involved our annual SCBA recertification training. We will do a live burn this Sunday at West Chester Burn Tower to get all our guys recertified and AARPs. We had, we also did a class on, we had an instructor come in for a class on mental health awareness for first responders, just make us aware of things that we take home with us every day to our families. And also, we had a forcible entry drill with our forcible entry door. Under our grant awards with our Safer Grant, I spoke at the last meeting that we are in an active recruitment campaign for the next four years to try to find some volunteer firefighters within our community. We have a brochure. It'll come to everybody's homes, hopefully in the next week or two. It's a nice flyer. Tells us a little bit about us, what we do every day, day in and day out. Also, if you ever have interest to come to the fire company, come up and see what we're all about. Our doors are always, always open. But we actively do volunteers, especially young guys around 18 to 30 years old. We could really use some people. We'll get you trained. We'll get you geared up. We'll get you all nine yards. We'll get you a firefighter physical. We'll get you set up. Our campaign is four years. We got $437,000 from the federal government to spend on this, and we have a marketing firm trying to sell us to everybody. So we're doing a good job. And look for us on our new website at, let me see, I got it written down here, because I'm using the wrong one, joinbrookhavenfire.org. So that's our new website. If you want to put an application in, you can put down time you're available. We can schedule an interview, that kind of things. But we're really trying to find some people to come in for the fire service. And our upcoming fundraisers for the fire department, that we're having, we're having a Chick-fil-A night this Wednesday, April 3rd, from 4 to 7, a Chick-fil-A over there. Probably going to be pouring rain, but we'll still be out there. So you get a chance to get a Chick-fil-A sandwich, grab one, and they do some proceeds towards us for it. And we're having a big Coach Bag Bingo on Mother's Day weekend on Friday, May 10th, at 6 o'clock here at the Borough Hall. So anybody who wants to do that and lend yourself a nice handbag, sign up. If you just want to come up and have a good time, sign up too. Our EMS report for March 2024, the ambulances answered 250 calls for service in the month of March, transported 162 people to the hospital. 176 of those calls were ALS, 74 were BLS, and we had 75 local arms, 175 mutual aids, and the ambulance has responded to 790 calls so far this year. That's a little bit. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Leslie, do you have your report? Thank you. I just have one thing. I know the weather's getting nice out, and the solicit, people will be around soliciting. Can we confirm that we only have right now a permit for Mr. Softy? Is that correct, John?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Mr. Softy.
The permits, the only one we have out right now is for Mr. Softy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if people come to your door and you feel like they're a nuisance and everything, you can always call 911 and send an officer out, and they will escort them out of our borough. End of my report. Thank you very much, Mayor. Mr. Wills, your report, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam President Protim, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I have one action item for Borough Council's consideration this evening. It, of course, concerns the consolidated collective bargaining agreement with Lodge Number 27 of the Fraternal Order of Police of Delaware County. And basically, the consolidated CBA incorporates the terms of the 2020 through 2024 collective bargaining agreement, as well as the memorandum of understanding regarding the sergeant's position into the prior 2017 to 2020 collective bargaining agreement. This particular agreement has been reviewed ad nauseam by both myself and the solicitor for the Fraternal Order of Police, and it is now ready to be adopted. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt that agreement.
So moved.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, thank you.
And I remind Borough Council that beginning on or about July the 1st of 2024, we will begin negotiations with Fraternal Order of Police in the hopes of achieving a new collective bargaining agreement that would become effective on or about January the 1st of 2025. Second item on my agenda concerns, again, the Our Lady of Charity School Property Acquisition Project. Again, I have forwarded a formal proposal to the attorney for the archdiocese. We are waiting to receive a formal response. I have followed up with a couple emails to the attorney last week, again, and I'm hoping to hear something in the near future. Third item on my agenda concerns, of course, the lease agreement, again, that we have with the County of Delaware concerning the Brookhaven District Court. Again, I had forwarded back in January new formal proposals to achieve a new lease agreement with the County of Delaware that would include a 10-year lease renewal program. Again, we are waiting to hear from the people at Delaware County Courthouse, specifically the president judge, as well as county council on that arrangement. So I hope to hear something as well in the near future on that issue. Third item on my agenda again concerns delinquent sewer and trash fee accounts, as I have corresponded and communicated with Borough Council. Last month, my office drafted and filed into Delaware County Court of Common Police 50 sewer fee municipal liens and 33 trash fee liens, again, for those property owners who have not fulfilled their obligations to the borough. And again, those liens have been filed pursuant to the various municipal ordinances that we have on the books. Next item on my agenda concerns right-to-no-law requests. Again, I continue to work diligently with our open records officer and our Borough Secretary as we continue to move forward and move through the various right-to-no-law requests. Some are quite cumbersome and very involved, and again, I'll continue to work with the Borough Secretary and the open records officer as we comply with those various document requests. And finally, I would bring to council's attention, as well as the public's, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to know quite well former Brookhaven Councilwoman Erica Fuchs, who passed away recently. I worked diligently with Ms. Fuchs in the Delaware County Boroughs Association, as well as the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association. She was a remarkable woman. High energy, had impeccable integrity, had a vast knowledge of municipal law, and a deep commitment to public service. She will be missed.
She will be.
She will be missed.
And with that, Madam President, I can report general progress.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Wills. Mr. Catania, did you have a report tonight?
Yes, thank you. The report is on file for anyone who wants to look at it. Couple items to discuss is the 2020 store, 2024 street resurfacing. The contracts with the borough and AF Damon Company have been executed. I should have a schedule from Damon at next month's meeting, when he plans to start. At the sewage treatment plant, each year, the boroughs are responsible, required to submit a report to DEP on the plant for the previous year. That report was filed as of March 31st to meet the deadline. The two action items on the agenda for this evening is first, the gym. The two action items on the agenda for this evening is first, the gym floor refinishing. We have awarded contract through Co-Stars to Miller Sports Flooring in the amount of $25,250.
So do we need a motion for that? Do we have a motion?
Please.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is awarded to Miller Sports Flooring.
And that is to Co-Stars, so that does not require a formal bidding process.
That's correct.
Next is the Charles Avenue sanitary sewer project. As you're aware, the borough received a grant for replacement of the sanitary sewer on Charles Avenue. They asked for authorization to advertise for bids.
So we do need a motion to advertise for bids for Charles Avenue sanitary sewer project. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is approved.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Catania? I guess we're at night. Oh, we're gonna do this. Oh, really. Okay, motion to approve the March 4th meeting minutes. Right? Okay, so we need a motion?
Yep, March 4th.
March 4th.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, they're approved. And there is a motion to waive the permit fees for Delco the Movie for filming scenes at the Borough Hall. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I actually have a question about that, if I may. Is, what, I mean, because I'm new, what, why are we waiving this fee? Is this something that we normally do, or?
We've never done it before. We've never, we've never had the movie people here.
Okay.
It's our first movie here.
This is our first movie, so we want to make sure that we're giving them a good Brookhaven welcome then.
For those who don't know, Delaware County is the Hollywood of the East. I'm serious. Go look at Sun Center. What's been, it's a movie production. They're making movies, television shows, and they were in the Ridley Township Prospect Park area two weeks ago making a movie for a TV show. So I mean, I, it's all over the place.
Okay.
We might as well get in on it while we can.
Sure, all right, well, you made the motion, I'll second the motion.
Yes, we have. We'll have the first one.
They're maybe looking for extras too for.
Oh, my goodness.
Non-speaking roles.
Well, then you can't apply them right now.
Unless they're looking for lawyer justice. Okay, so the main thing is they're going to waive the permit fee. Do you know what the permit fee was, John?
No.
No, I didn't hear anything. Well, I guess for the first time, we should waive it. And then we're going to negotiate if they, they have made, they have talked to us last year, and nothing, nothing came of it. So we're really hoping Brookhaven on the map. I would think so. So we're going to make a motion to waive the permit fee. Anybody want to make that motion?
We did.
I think we did, yeah. I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, back to my report. Okay, I have a motion to approve the bill list, and what I'm going to do for the bill list for April, I'm going to go through the list. General fund is $158,098.33. Trash fund is $4,671.59. Sewer fund is $328,967.12. Road fund is $2,602.30 for a grand total of $494,339.34 for the month of April. So I'm going to make the motion so we can have it approved tonight.
Need a second.
Do we need a second? We do.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll pay the bills this month. Delilah will be happy. We are going to make a motion to advertise for the position of Borough Treasurer, because Delilah will be leaving later in the year. So we, we do need to put an ad in the paper, so I'm going to make, who wants to make the motion to advertise?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we, John will put the ad in the paper for us. That's all I have under my report. Nora, did you want to do your report?
Oh, yeah, sure. And before, before I get into my report, I just wanted to make a brief statement, because I didn't at the last meeting, but I just wanted to say that, you know, offer my support to the police department. I think that, you know, you put your lives on the line for us every day, and I think it's very important that you feel supported by council. And, and also, I think that even though I'm still relatively new here, one of the most important things we can have as elected officials is the trust of the people we represent. And I think that that has been severely damaged over the last month. And, you know, I think we need your trust that we are going to act in the best interest of Brookhaven, and that we're going to act with integrity and accountability. So my, my pledge to Brookhaven is that I will do everything that I can in the coming weeks and months to help restore that trust in your council and your police department, and also help to, to restore a more productive working relationship between the council and the police department going forward. So, thank you. And then on to my, my update about the Sustainability Committee. I, I do apologize, I told you all that I would have a, a date for our first meeting that I would announce tonight, but I don't have that. I do have about six people, six or seven people who have expressed interest in joining the committee. So what I'd like to do is actually, I'm going to send an email out to all of you and take a poll to see what, what dates would work for you, because I want to make sure that everyone who wants to be included can be included. And then at that point, we'll settle on a date and, and get started with that. In the meantime, I have also started to work on getting quotes for the municipal center for solar panels for the municipal center. And John is going to be doing the bulk of that work once I put him in, in touch with the, the companies I'm contacting.
Let me have.
But, you know, the first step will just be to, to see if it's even feasible, you know, to see if it's feasible for the, the structure of the roof and everything, and then to, to look at costs. And the, the idea would be that if, if it is feasible and the costs are reasonable, and should council be amenable to it, we would then look for grants to, to fund it. And that is it for my update today.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Howard, do you have a report?
I do.
Thank you.
Family Day meeting was held on Thursday, March 28th at 6:00 PM. It was our very first one for the upcoming Family Day for 2024. It was very productive. We already had the shirt designs, the theme, some cost-saving ideas on the food, and tweets of characters that will be walking around. So it was a very productive meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 25th at 6:00 PM. I met with the CEO, Justin Stouch, of Stouch Lighting on Thursday, March 28th at 7:00 PM to discuss the adjustment of the field lights at Memorial and Sampson Parks. The lights are up, they're operational, we just need to adjust them, which will require a lift and some extremely dry weather, which hopefully will come sometime very soon. Baseball will have their light ceremony at Memorial Park on Friday, April 5th at 2000, at 6:00 PM. They will have the Senator, the state rep there for a game. We also have, softball will be hosting their ceremony at Sampson Park, I believe preliminary, on Friday, May 17th, and it's going to be alum game, so more on that when we get closer to the date. Opening day for baseball and softball is scheduled this Saturday on April 6th. The parade will begin at 9:00 AM at Faith Community Church, so come on out and enjoy the parade and cheer on our, our athletes for the upcoming season. I want to thank Chief Vice, Chief Montella, Dave Evans, John Wilbert, and Steve Schultz for their response and diligence for the power outage that was affected that Chief Montella mentioned earlier. It affected Borough Hall, and we identified some critical issues that have to be addressed. So thank you, Mr. Wilbert, for your diligence with that today. And also, I want to thank all those involved with the storm that occurred on Saturday, March 23rd, which was a real hoot for everyone. The parade committee is scheduled to meet this month. It states on the calendar that it's going to be April 10th, but it may be the following, following week, possibly the following week, which will be the 17th, but we will put information out, Linda will put information out on that. The Technology and Communications Committee is going to be meeting on Thursday, April 11th, which I mentioned earlier, and we will make sure that we discuss the, the live streaming that was mentioned by Lynn earlier. For the rec board, rec board did meet on Thursday, the 28th at 7:00 PM. Some of the events that are upcoming are, we have our Spring Fling Dance this Friday at 6:00, Tom, 7:00, 7:00 o'clock. And I'm sure Tom's going to come up and correct anything that I missed. But the Spring Fling Dance is at 7:00 in our gym for the 5th and 6th graders, for all the Delaware, Delco, not Delco, Pendelco School District, the Christian Academy, and as well as Holy Family for 5th and 6th graders. Friday, April 12th is our murder mystery dinner, the Murder in Tinseltown. You can still have tickets, purchase tickets. There are $50 for, $55 a person and $50 for a couple. On Saturday, April 13th, will be another HIIT class, your high intense interval training at 9:00 AM in the gym. The class is $5. On Sunday, April 14th, is Artful Aging. The craft is going to be a flower of some sort made with fabric from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. I want to wish happy birthday to Detective Wetton and happy birthday to Sergeant Eastman that will be coming up between now and the next council meeting workshop. So I do have a few comments that I would like to make on myself and on behalf of my husband. So obviously, the incident that occurred back on March 8th, there's a lot of opinions that are on Facebook. I don't do with, well with opinions, I do with facts. So for me, Facebook is nothing but unfortunately fake accounts with fake people that have nothing really important to say because they don't have much time. If you are that bored, we have plenty of committees that need volunteers. So some of the facts that I'm going to give you tonight are some actual things that have occurred. So those that know me, that claim that they know my husband on Facebook, they don't know him. I have been almost married to my husband for 25 years come July, and we've been together for 32 years come July, or together for 25, 32 years. So in the last six years, I have watched my husband on council. The first two years, I was not on council, but I came to every council meeting and every council workshop, sat in the back and took notes to assist him and to support him. When I came on council in 2020, with the current council and with the previous council, a lot of the programs that we have in place would not have been successful without the implementation of Mr. Heller. So some of those programs are our Hometown Hero Banner Program, which he started two years prior to me coming on council, where he met with over all of the participants. We came up here, we took pictures of the banners and had the families talk to us about all of their loved ones that had served. So that program would not have been initiated without Terry and obviously Councilman Burke over there on the committee. He also started the Sanctuary for the Hallie Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary. For those that do not know who that is, or what that is involving, is actually something to deal with mental health and suicide awareness, where we took a retention pond and made it something into a beautiful sanctuary honoring Hallie Jackson, working with her family that came very close to Chief Vice and the police department as well, and they have the No Shave November, and all that money does participate, go towards the Hallie Christine Jackson. The recording started because of Mr. Heller. We also had a lot of businesses and business owners that Mr. Heller has reached out to bring them to Brookhaven, to make us and put us on the map. We had him actually, many times, went out and actually went to a resident's house to remove a dead rat. He also removed, went to find a snake that was in a resident's house. These are all things that he did not need to do, but he did, and he went above and beyond. And, and many of you may not know of the crisis that we had back in the summer of 2022 with our ALS service. And for those that don't know, that back in the summer of 2022, Crozier at the time, who went from a nonprofit to a profit, were going to remove our advanced life safety chase car, which meant our paramedic was going to go away, which again, would mean that life people would die. So working with the fire department, the fire board, working with our senators and our state reps, and with our county council, we met, and they wanted to charge us in mid-cycle for the budget, $150,000 to continue this service, which meant that they put a value on human life. During that time, we had meetings, we weren't getting anywhere, they weren't going to budge, but Mr. Heller went and spoke with actually the senator and with the county council and was able to come up with the money to actually pay for that service. In the end, Crozier decided that they were going to keep their contract with us, and Mr. Heller went and was able to retrieve $100,000 from the senator's office so that we were able to pay our EMS healthcare benefits. So these are just a snapshot of some of the things. He also, also, when Officer O'Robbie Youssef went into the water to rescue that young boy, we, he initiated a time off for the officer so that he can take care of himself physically and mentally. So for those that don't know Terry, he is very dedicated to this community, he's dedicated to the police, he does support the police. And for me, to be up here, we do support the police, Terry, council, the mayor, always will have our back. One of the things, you know, Nora mentioned about the trust, and one of the comments that was made last week was that the trust is gone. Well, I don't believe that the trust is gone. I believe that it just needs to be worked on, just like any other relationship that is on there. We have 8,500 individuals that we report to. That's how many the police and how many the fire department have as well. You all are bosses. We need to, if something is being reported to us, we need to act in the best interest of 8,500 people, and that is our job. We may not like it, we may have difference of opinions, but at all times, we need to have mutual respect. And we do have respect for the police, we have respect for our residents, and that we will work diligently to rebuild that trust, as Nora stated. So that is the end of my report. Thank you, madam.
And we do have Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Workplace safety, I attended a workplace safety meeting, which an audit was completed by the insurance carrier. The audit is a routine procedure regarding policies and procedures, and we're well within the guidelines of those procedures. During the course, no borough vehicles were involved in any type of accidents, no borough employees were listed as being injured, and we still have one Public Works employee out on a workman's comp injury. I attended a historical committee meeting. The committee continues to acquire historical information on residents and have completed the effects, and with the, the effects of Mimi Montgomery and John Colton have opened up a topic of the servicemen within our community that were killed in action. These four men are listed in our showcase right outside here in the Borough Hall. If you have an opportunity, just take a glance, it's just a brief view of the service that they were in and where they lived here in Brookhaven with their snapshots along the way there. That's my report.
Thank you. And we do have Mr. Burke.
Thank you, madam President Protam. So the ordinance committee did not meet last month as we were planning on doing because there was an emergency unscheduled executive session of council that was called. The members were, emailed a copy of ordinance 827, which is the responsible contractor ordinance to review for our next meeting, which is Thursday, April 18th at 6:30. I gave some comments. I gave some comments last meeting, last week, about support for our Police Department as well as fire and EMS. I stand by those words. I don't think anybody in here who's been a resident for a very long time would doubt anything that Mrs. Heller is saying about Mr. Heller. He has done a lot of good for this borough, there's no doubt about it. He's come up with a lot of great ideas. But what I think we'd all like to hear is an apology. And I don't think we've gotten it so far. And it's unfortunate that he's not here to give his side of the story, but that's, that's how I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Deplicky, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Prof. Tem's Wiki. I want to start with, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 9:00 to noon, Brookhaven will be hosting a shredding event at Coburn Elementary. This will include paper products, just be mindful not to have, you know, metal bindings or clip, paper clips or anything, just, you know, any kind of paper product, as well with anything with electrical cords, TVs, computer equipment, electronics. And I'm even thinking it's appliances as well. So, please, if you want to make it over there, you know, we have, have it all set up for you and we'll take everything you need to get rid of. Just be, also be mindful, this is coinciding with the opening day parades for baseball as well as softball. Their parade will start along Edgemont Avenue. From what I understand, not all lanes will be shut on Edgemont, but might be mindful of traffic restrictions and maybe little detours in the area. I would like to think the parade route will be off of Edgemont by around 10-ish. So, at that point, you should be have free access to get down Coburn Boulevard. But ahead of 10:00, I think you might have to detour around in the back roads in the neighborhoods to make it into the recycling event. Also, at this time, I want to have a motion to hire a new seasonal employee. His name is Mason Esner, at the rate of $17.51 an hour for the work Public Works. Again, this is a seasonal employee. So, can I get a motion? I want to make the motion to hire Mr. Esner at $17.51.
Do you have a second?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, he is hired.
All right, yeah.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I also wanted to say for the storm the other day, or over the weekend on Saturday, fortunately, we did not get any kind of serious concerning situation. So, we got through that storm pretty well. Public Works didn't have to, you know, really go at it really hard to, I'm sure they were out and about cleaning drains and whatnot, but nothing serious occurred. So, again, we made it through that storm quite well. And my last comment, I, at the workshop meeting last week, Solicitor Wills made his statement, and I fully stand behind the statement he made on behalf of council. We do want to work well and productively with the Police Department. I, for one, want, I've never had anything negatively to say about the Police Department, but I stand behind the statement of Mr. Wills, and hopefully, we can get through this situation and work well together with the Police Department once again. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, we do have some inspector reports, Mr. Polo.
Evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I will not bore you with my usual numbers. I want to talk about a couple of properties. I've got numerous complaints, 700 Block Marshall. I'm well aware of the house. I'm working with the owner to get it cleaned up, but it's going to take time. The other thing, I finally got ahold of the owners of the old flower shop. I'm going to work with them, hopefully by June, we'll have the greenhouse torn down. So, that's a work in progress. The other thing I'll say now, that's spring and it's raining, remember to cut your grass. It's for businesses and homeowners, and do not put your grass in the street. That's actually illegal. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I can add to the grass clippings. You're allowed through the trash company arrangement to have up to three bags of yard waste, leaves, you know, general stuff, grass clippings, leaves, don't put sticks out there in the street either. If you have tree clippings to get rid of, you know, call the, you know, office here in Public Works can make arrangements to make it time to get the shredder out to your property and get rid of those. Okay?
Mr. Leslie, did you have a?
Mr. Sherwin.
Did you have a further report?
Evening, again, council.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherwin, we took care of this month as the fire marshal. So, the CO inspections are ongoing. We covered 3432 Edgemont Avenue, that's the old Frank and Frank Giovanni's, Abruzzi Pizza changed hand, Femi's Pizza, Swiss Farms, Sandra's Daycare, and we still have a couple pending out there. I want to thank Mr. Catania in his office. We finally got addresses for Scott Park, 900 Marshall. Durkin Field's going to be 200 Coburn. Eaton Park's going to be 20 West Maple. And Sampson Park is going to be 3431 Nathan. Thank you, Mr. Catania, on that. Again, spring cleanup for your properties, people, your basement, your garages, sheds, attic, so forth. Hazardous materials cannot go into the trash, the waste. Look on the Duco website, they can, on there, they'll tell you where to bring it. There's different spots throughout the county. You can take that, paint dinners, mineral spirits, et cetera. Remember, no flammable's in your attached garages. Old fire extinguishers, don't bring them to the firehouse, we don't take them. Lowe's will take them, I believe, and they also take the old light bulbs and stuff like that. Boarding conditions in your house, clean it up, get rid of it. You haven't touched it in three years, get rid of it. Summit Pharmacy's coming on down there. Be careful on that shopping center, they have New Islands in there, and you can run into them. Somebody's already run into them, I see, they're laughing out there. So, be careful. Ross Renovations, that's ongoing, that's coming along really good. And I didn't really hear your report, Mrs. Heller, about the key fobs in the borough here when the power went out? Is that, did you mention that?
No, but I believe that the chief and I believe John were working on that to rectify the issue.
Okay, so the fire department, if anyone, if a fire alarm goes off, some kind of battery backup on that key fob system so we don't have to damage anything.
I'm sure the fire department would find some way to get in here if they.
Oh, we'll get, we'll get in, but we don't want to damage anything. That's why we have the hot box, ordinance in the borough out.
We did find some flaws that we need to correct, and I'm working on that right now.
So, assuming that it fails safe and, fails secure, then not fails safe.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to be addressed.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. And.
I meant that as a compliment.
Any other inspector, I don't think that you missed anybody else. Okay, now, there's a second public discussion period. If you want to come to the podium and put your name, print your name for Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Tom.
Who is this person?
I don't think.
Tom Dykes for Cavan Road, Rec Board. Okay, so, we, should I do announce the dances this Friday for 5th and 6th graders? It'll all pend up going, including Christian Academy and Holy Family. It's $10 to get in, the kids get a slice of pizza and two drinks for that price. The parade is Saturday at 9:00 o'clock for softball and baseball. Starts at Faith Community Church, comes down Edgemont Avenue. The girls shoot off at Trimble and go over that way. The boys continue down the Cambridge Road. So, you know, with the recycling, checking some other things today on other rec boards around and things are going on. Does anyone know how lucky we are in Brookhaven, being able to take electronics to our recycling?
Yes.
You know how lucky we are?
Yes.
Okay, five, five minutes, five minutes off the road, okay, off the road. They're having a recycling day the same day. Televisions are $30.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, think about that. We do it for free. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing up that, Tom.
Thank you very much. Murder Mystery is Friday, March, April to 12th. It's at 7:00 o'clock, doors open at 6:30. There's a catered buffet dinner. Tickets are still available until Sunday, April to 7th. I have to turn the date and number into eight or only eight. HIT classes, with the high-intensity, high-intensity interval training class, exercise class, is the 13th and the 27th from 9:00 to 10:00 in the gym, it's $5. Where else am I at here? I forgot this, the 7th, 9:00 o'clock in the morning. Yes, you could be there. Old school, school person, you should be able to do that. April 7th, I forgot, was Artful Aging, that's from 1 to 3. 14th, I'm sorry, 14th, 1 to 3. And that is a free class for anyone 55 and over. Please sign up at, in the office, just call them, whatever, we'll get you on there. After that, we're taking a little break. Yoga will be starting up in May, we're not sure of the exact date yet, it may be about the middle of May. It'll be an outdoor class. It's $5, I'm not sure if it's $5 or $10, yeah, we've got to figure that out with the instructor. There were some questions on that, but that's coming up. We have the flea market coming up on June the 2nd. It's from 9:00 to 3:00 on Sunday, June the 2nd. Vendor setup starts at 8:00 o'clock. It's $20 a table for vendor to set up. Really cheap, guys, really cheap. And you'll get rid of some of that stuff in your house, come up and get a table for $20. Let's have some stuff. Concerts in the parks start on June 16th, or June 15th. The band's not picked yet, we're working on that still, but that'll be going on, that'll be at Eaton Park. Family Day planning, as we said, is already started, lots of things going on with that. We're looking for our next meeting on April the 25th at 6:00. Come and join us. We need, we need lots and lots and lots of volunteers for Family Day. I don't know how many of you all come to Family Day, but we need probably in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 volunteers to take care of 1,000 or 1,800 residents. A lot of work. Please come out. So, that's where, that's where it picks us up into June, so that's where we're at right now. The only other thing is for Mr. Catania who left.
I think it was on purpose.
He had.
Okay, he knows, sorry, he and I talked about it. At Eaton Park, we're asking that we go into the Popeyes escrow account and work on that. All seven of the arborvitae trees are dead already, they were just put in in October. They're all dead, they need to be replaced. The rhododendrons that were there to block the back of the trash receptacle, trash area, are dying or dead. So, that needs to be replaced. The other thing with the arborvitae is they're placed too far apart. They're, right now, they're about 10 to 12 feet apart, and they should be about 4 to 5 feet apart. So, right now, we're looking, we have this little wall, this little soldier standing up there instead of a wall of arborvitae. So, those are a couple of things we need to do and work on. And that should be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else, public, public discussion?
I don't want to, might just have to write a long name.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jim Kelso, 3712 Mount Vernon Avenue. Been a resident of Brookhaven for 30 years. And in the 30 years, I never saw as much of a circus that I see now. I came here at night just to listen and observe. Isn't it ridiculous that the chief of police had to come up here and defend that there's a hit list? This is ridiculous. Councilwoman Sewicki, you said you want Brookhaven to be on the map. Well, Terry Heller did that when he ran to the social media. That's a disgrace. Put a stain on our town. Cast shadows of doubt of the integrity of the police officers. I've met with Chief Weiss. He's, he's doing a lot in this community, getting out, engaging with the people, trying to develop that trust. And all the good works that Terry did, that's no avoid. He destroyed all the work that this chief did. And I ask that the council, you guys do the job we elect you to do, and have him resign immediately for having stepped down. Thank you.
Julie, Billy Road, pretty much following him. There was a lot of accusations. Had that been thrown out about you, how would you guys feel? How do you think the Police Department feels about that? I would like them to be able to address a lot of the accusations that were thrown their way as it is damaging, and it does increase the risk of their jobs. Also, I'd like to personally ask you, am I on some type of hit list?
There is no hit list that exists for anyone.
And I'm not the only one that this has come across either. That's pretty much it. If you could, address the accusations.
Some of what I'm going to say, some of you may have already heard, but I'm going to say it again and again and again until the message is heard. I support these officers and everything they do every day. Their job is difficult enough. But now, we have the president of council that is calling for individuals to challenge their arrests and stating that he has no faith in this Police Department. Again, I will say, these are some of the hardest-working officers I have ever worked with in 28 years in law enforcement. The statements and allegations made by Mr. Heller on social media, as well as multiple news outlets, are untrue. They are baseless, and they are lies. These statements can never be undone. His statements will have long-lasting effects. And yes, the very safety of our officers is a very serious concern to me. To address some of these untrue statements, Mr. Heller stated, quote, "I am 100% certain that it will come back well under the legal limit," end quote. This is not true. He stated the entire event was orchestrated by someone above the officer. Again, untrue. Mr. Heller stated, and I quote, "There is no shortage of DUIs being thrown out after charges," end quote. And he claims this is evidenced by public record. First, there is no searchable public database to simply search DUIs. You would need specific information to search the public docket sheets. And his claims about our DUI enforcement, that is a lie. Since 2023, our department has had 169 DUI arrests, and 162 of them have been held for trial. Simple math will tell you that that is 97.63% held for trial. Again, a lie. I already spoke about the quota, the hit list, whatever you want to call it, it doesn't exist. Regarding police spending, we have not disagreed on spending. All of council and I have met at many different times to discuss equipment, et cetera, and it has always been a productive engagement. I would also remind everyone, the council approves spending. I cannot just go out and spend any money that I wish. I am accountable, and I am fiscally responsible. And I am very confident that Councilwoman Sewicki can attest to this.
I do.
And as if something wasn't learned from all of this, the posts on social media continue. What no one knows is that I had a phone conversation with Mr. Heller the Saturday morning after the incident. He claimed to me that there was another entity that was behind this, and I will leave that unnamed. Well, is it them, or is it me? Well, right, it's neither. All of this, everything that has happened comes down to personal responsibility. If personal responsibility was taken in this incident, and he didn't run to spread the lies on social media outlets, we likely wouldn't be here now talking about this. They are the facts that I have. And yes, I would agree that Mr. Heller has done a lot of great things and important things for this borough. But what about what has happened since March 8th? Do we just forget about it? I'm supposed to just tell these guys to go out? Just go out, guys, do your job. You don't have support of some of the people on council, but that, that's okay. Remember, he has no faith in this Police Department. That's what he said. He's continuing to post on social media, and just today, I received two right-to-know requests from Mr. Heller. But we're moving forward. Right. Again, council is correct when they spoke about all of the accomplishments we have all been a part of, to include our accreditation status. But the serious issue and what needs to be addressed is what has happened since March 8th. We now have a department that is clearly aware that the very person who sits in charge of council, the head of council, has no faith in our police. This cannot be undone. This is not going away, and it's, it needs to be dealt with if this department is ever going to try to move forward. The longer it goes unaddressed, the worse it gets, in my opinion. Again, I will end by saying I am angry. Again, I will end by saying I am angry, I am frustrated, and most of all, I am disappointed. This borough and our police department deserves better.
Hi, my name is Jenny McKee. I'm from Mount Vernon Avenue here. I just want to let you know I've been an investigator for thirty-five years. What I see, I, I'm not thrilled, Terry, put that out. But what I have seen since then, I have issues. Some with the police department, some with the community. There is a Facebook page, Brookhaven P-, Brookhaven PD. Who's in charge of that Brookhaven P-, uh, Facebook page? Is it borough-run? Because it does post things about what's going on in the borough, about the letter, um, that Chief Weiss put out, which everyone had the right to see, about the findings of what they found out would happen with Terry. Then also with the, the, um, the bus that they find, the, the guy that was just caught stealing, whatever, it posted. But what I have an issue with that Facebook page, one, if it is a borough-run, we need to stop putting on these comments. These comments that are, we are allowing on that Facebook page a borough-run, if it is, I don't know, let me ask you. Is it a borough-run Facebook page? Who's in charge of it?
The police department.
And you're paid by the borough, right?
Am I paid by the?
Yeah. I just have a question, this, I think that needs a better control of preventing these lies, misconceptions, some of it's truthful. I got it, I've, I've looked at it. We have more people out of the borough making comments on this website, on that Facebook page than ever before. People I don't even know, we've got fake accounts on it. But I just think that for the, for the safety of our borough and for the integrity of our borough, that, that Facebook page should just be post of, hey, this is what happened, hey, our officers caught this thief. This is what we did. It shouldn't have to be comments. You should be able to post a something, this is what happened in it. If they're going to want, someone wants to put something, put a happy face, put a mad face, something like that. But when it gets carried away and then police officers or other people or relatives or girlfriends, whatever, keep adding to that post, that's what continues this anger, this confusion. I am walking the dog the other day. I have some man come out of a house, ask me what's going on because he sees me volunteer enough. And I was like, I don't, I don't know, I'm not happy with both of them. I'm off with the police, been in it for thirty-five years. I'm, I, Terry's done good with us. I don't know what is, I don't think, I know you two have conflicts, I guess. Go deal with it, get it over with. This borough needs to move on. Last week, everyone got up and started to say, oh, we support the police and, absolutely, we support the police. But it went into a direction of, you know, hating Terry or, or hating what was said. I don't like what was said, trust me. I don't like it. Shoff in the hip, I don't like it. Should have never done it. Should have done behind doors, should have happened that way. So, and I, your guys are great. You've brought them up to standards, you've given them the confidence, you've gotten their certificates, you've done well by them. But the drama needs to stop. That is everybody in this community. It needs to end, it needs to move on. So either you do something behind closed doors and have a good discussion and get it over with and allow this community to go on again. I agree, maybe apology would be good. I, that may, but in due time, maybe that will happen, I have no idea. But the bottom line is, we have got to stop this. That Facebook page is the death of us. I have read some comments and I'm like, are you crazy? It's crazy. And I truly also think that I don't care if you're a member of this borough, you get paid by the borough, you, you got a watch where you put on Facebook. Not just you. Your girlfriend, your fiance, your brother, your, you, everyone has to be conscious of what they put out there.
That goes for council president too?
That goes, yes, yes, yes. I'm making a point, it's for everybody. Because that's what's going to keep us healthy. We're not healthy now. So we got to start all over again. So, but that post, Facebook page needs to, needs to get controlled. Because I, that's what the gentleman came out the other day talking about. I was like, I, I, in fact, I, I just wondered about it. So, of course, it went strong. And then I was disgusted. And I was disgusted about it, just certain people that tend to be on that and nonstop. And majority of them aren't even borough residents. It just needs to end. Let's all think about doing something and dead it ends. Okay? Thanks.
Do I have to write my name again?
No.
No. All right. Conny Baxter, forty years ago. Standing in the old Brookhaven School. Challenged when you were, I don't know, same age as we were, I guess. Probably in our thirties, late thirties, forties. Challenged the borough council because they were challenging the police. Happened to be Chief Heller. We were merely PTL moms at the time. And we raised a lot of hell. And the kids raised a lot of hell. Now, forty years later, fast forward. Again, that was Armin DeCarlo, I believe, back in the day. All right?
I think so.
Forty years later, we have president of council and the chief of police batting heads again. Well, I can say, back then, they were going after the chief because Chief Heller was above and beyond. I, sir, do not know you from Adam, I truly don't. You've never met me, that's fine. But it took a while, but at least our police chief knew at the time that he had the, had, because we literally took to the streets. We marched through the streets with signs, with us and the kids. Obviously, Chief Heller stayed. Armin DeCarlo did not. So, you, sir, are an employee. Okay? You, if you're a value to this borough, we can't vote you out. We cannot vote you out. We can vote them out if we don't like what they're doing. If we don't like what Mr. Heller's doing, we can, we can take action against that. You, like Chief Heller, remained a stalwart in our community. He represented us. He mated his everyday plan to make sure the kids knew who he was and what he was about. He made sure that Mr. Papas was in Coburn Elementary School. Everybody knew Mr. Pap-, you know, Officer Papas. I have pictures on a card of Mr. Papas. He didn't look like that. He looked more like that. But that was, that was what the chief did because they couldn't fire him unless we let them. Okay? However, this changes all the time. So I would beg you, if what you're saying is true, and I have no idea if it's true or not. Um, I do know some police in the, in, in my neighborhood, and they're wonderful. So, by, by association, I'm going to put you there. Just because, if he likes you, yep, I guess you're okay. Because I honestly can't speak to it. These people, we can make changes. So I would ask you to please do what you can to heal from your perspective, what you can do for our borough. Because you are our employee. We put faith in the, the people at the time to hire the best that they could afford at the time. And I'm assuming, as a forty-five-year resident, that you're probably the best, we're gonna, you know, that we, that we got the best. We always have. I beg you to please stop the nonsense. You were around when that all happened. You remember.
I remember vividly.
You do, do. And it was ripping the dis-, our borough apart.
Yes, it did.
We don't want, you know, history does not have to repeat itself.
That's true.
Okay? If we don't want Mr. Heller, we will vote him out. I promise you. Armin DeCarlo is gone. Mr. Heller, if the, if the borough residents decide we don't want him to represent us anymore, he will be gone. So please, do what you do in your bailiwick to keep us safe, continue to do what you're doing. You guys, please do not take sides. It's way too easy. I saw it before. It was Janice and I don't know, a couple others, and, you know, some Republicans and, you know. And it was until we forced them at the time to make the right decision. What, four years ago, I tried to get up on this board. I lost. Oh, well. But I was willing to serve because I wanted to be open, I wanted to be transparent, and I wanted to do probably what most of these people want to do. So please, stop with the Facebook. One of the things that happened to me when I was running is I introduced myself on Facebook. The people that were running against me wrote a bunch of stuff on Facebook. And because I don't do Facebook every day, I didn't see it. So I didn't answer it. So then they wrote back again that because I didn't answer it, that must be that I admitted what I did or what they assumed that I did or what I said. I didn't even see it. So please, stop with the Facebook. It's getting none of us. You say that Mr. Heller puts a, a, you know, a shadow on us? No. We put a shadow on us. No. He did right, wrong, that's your opinion. But to, to consistently go back to Facebook and just stir the pot.
Shame he's not here to hear it.
That's not something I can control. That's not something you can control. What you can control is the police department. And if you do your job, trust me, you will be here next year. And the year after that, and the year after that. If he doesn't do his job, he will not. But that's our job. Thank you.
Yes, Bob Buckson, seven oh one Lincoln. I'd like to say, uh, I've been here, over forty years I've been a resident. I'm a retired life member of the fire company. A lot of you know me from that. Back in the day, when we had something like this, some type of disagreement or different views, we used to say, let's take them both and put them in a room, lock the door, right? And let them work it out amongst themselves. We can't, I had to agree with the two young ladies, we can't continue. He said, she said, I said, he said, and then little digs go in there that probably were meant, but probably weren't really meant to be seen by anybody. In the one letter Chief Weiss put out about what happened, he said, uh, Mr. Heller was slightly under the limit. Okay? Slightly under the limit. How many times are you slightly over the limit?
That's right.
And you're handcuffed and taken away? You know, that's uncalled for. It should have said you're under the limit or you're over the limit. That, you know, we don't need to get into this little, little thing. That's what continues to pour gasoline on this fire. It continues to do that. And until those two get in a room together and discuss it, if they want to bring their attorneys, bring your attorneys, bring whoever you want to bring. Okay? In a room together, close the door, and at the end of the day, I'll bet you, we need the two grown adults. Chief Weiss has done a hell of a lot for the police department. Not too long ago, our, our, um, it's sad to me to say that our police department was a wreck. Okay, had no leadership, you know, we had temporary chiefs, and then we had no chiefs, and it was a mess. He's brought a lot to the police department. Terry Heller has brought a heck of a lot to the community with all the things that he's done, ideas that he's brought forward. You know what, it's not just him. It's leadership. And it's the whole council that contributes to that, just like the police. It's not just Chief Weiss. It's the whole police department that puts their lives on the line every day to protect us. It's not, it's, but one person has to lead it. And if you don't have good leadership, this is what happens. But we have to get together, I suggest, you know, somebody, take the bull by the horn, put them in a room, and let's, let's bring this to rest. This is splitting the community apart almost as bad as the government's doing right now. You know, Republicans and Democrats vowing heads, and he said, she said, I did this, he did that, and we have a mess on our hands. It's the same thing happening in this borough. Borough's a nice place. It's been over forty years I've been here. And I wouldn't be here if it wasn't. Okay, so, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ryan Eastman. I live in the thirty-four-hundred block of Victor Avenue. Just bear with me, I had some things to say, but I've done some audibles with people talking. So I'm sorry if I end up repeating myself, myself from the workshop meeting. But I'll be here, I'll stand up at this podium until our department gets at least an answer of what is being done, done about the council president's comments on social media that are still continuing. At one point, no one can dispute the good that Mr. Heller has done. But now what are we going to do about the irreparable damage between the police department and borough council and this community? If I went into my promotional interview to become sergeant and said nothing but, I want to make this department better, I'll tell you right now, I would not have been promoted. We need to know what is being done to show your support to us. Actions speak louder than words. We still have heard nothing from the president of council or two council members that stood up there tonight. If anyone believes that we are being dramatic about this, I personally invite you on a ride along with myself. I'm gladly partaking in it. I work days and nights for those that, uh, can't do both. I'm here to speak as a resident of our borough. Our police department has undergone significant change and growth in the last few years since Chief Weiss. Many didn't believe our accomplishments would be possible, but here we are. I want all of you to know that I am proud to be part of the great things we are doing in our police department, and you all should be too. I have been a member of this police department since two thousand and eighteen. That is six years ago. Chief Weiss is now my fifth chief in six years. This attack on our police department needs to stop. It is all because, all because of one person. The statements he has made against our police department are unacceptable, and I do not see how it can remain on council with those statements and opinions. You don't know the challenges we face every single day that the uniform goes on, and to make those statements from a position of power makes our job that much more difficult. The solution is simple. An apology is not enough. An apology will not take away the news articles, the Facebook comments, the Facebook posts. Councilwoman Heller needs to resign from council.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing nobody else, I, we do.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, I'm John Pacilio, forty-nine, twenty-six, Grand Drive. I've been a resident here myself for the last seven years. I've, uh, I've seen a lot of changes go here. I've seen the, the, our police department not have the support that it needs. We've not had, uh, proper, uh, leadership in our police department. We've also had, you know, changes of our board. They pushed to have our police department be better. Uh, Terry was one of them. He is a big proponent of that. Also, I, this lady brought up the Brookhaven Police Department page. Now, what I saw on this page, you know, a lot of people here in this community and outside this community have had their this community have had their, given their opinions on Facebook. A lot of them, some good, a lot bad. The one thing I will say, as Brookhaven Police Department, I don't care, you know, I respect the police, I support law enforcement 100%, however, I did see a lot of personal digs from the Brookhaven Police Department. Now, who here on this council or the police department can tell me who manages it? Anyone? There can't be nobody here and if council doesn't know, that's unacceptable. Okay? Because council obviously here doesn't know what they're doing as far as who manages what, as far as the, the Facebook page, official Facebook pages. You know, I think that people here, if it's a Brookhaven Police Department page or a Brookhaven, it should be an official. Okay? Everyone's getting their little digs here on the council is unacceptable because you're all taking sides, no matter, Mrs. Heller, I know that's your husband and I respect him, but there should be no personal opinions on this council, that should be kept to yourselves. You guys represent all of us. Okay? That's unacceptable. All these digs, unacceptable. Police department, unacceptable for giving digs out. You guys need to either get together, talk with your lawyers, work this out. You know, I support the police, I support fire and everyone, but the lack of professionalism from council and everyone here is insane. Please do better to talk amongst yourselves and yes, Terry did go to the public. I'm not condoning all that either, okay? I respect, you know, I was there that night, when we were there at Chili's. I personally, I'm not taking his side. Did he have two drinks? Yes. But I will say this, no, he had two drinks only and I was a witness to that. I will say that the police department, personally, I think you guys need to work together, just like you did before when, when they brought you in Chief Vice. I respect you and all your, you know, your statements, but I think you need to be less personal about it, okay? And, and the reports that you give, fine, they're great, but keep, please just keep it to the facts and not personal opinions, that's all I ask. I'm not trying to be disrespectful here. I think the police department does a great job here, better than any community I've ever seen. Okay? My wife brought me here to this community because it's a great place and she was damn right. This council, I do respect you all, but I think it's time, we need to work together again, whether, doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on, but please keep your personal opinions to yourselves in council, close doors, and let's work together to get this issue resolved. And I hope that I don't have any further issues with anyone in public after this because everyone's probably gonna be looking for me on Facebook now. But seriously, I think we got a great thing here, I hope we can all work together and if I offend anyone, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm mediating adjourn. Thank you all for coming.